Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Whitehall City Council meeting of September 15th, 2020, commencing at 7:07. For folks who are watching home, we apologize for being a little late. We had an executive session that ran a little bit longer than anticipated, and so the good news is you've not missed anything. At this time, I'd like to start with a moment of silence and ask everyone to please rise, follow by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, Ms. Aug, would you please call roll?
Cantor?
Present.
Peck?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
Bailey? Rodriguez?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Present.
President of Congress?
Present. At this time, I would accept a motion to excuse the absent members or member.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to excuse the absent member.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Coniston, to excuse the absent member. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Our member has been excused. At this time, I would accept a motion for approval of the minutes of the September 1st, 2020, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 1st minutes.
Second?
A motion was made by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have two special presentations. Zach Woodruff, Director of Public Service, and Ryan Andrews, Engineer, EMH and TIR, on the OPWC application Woodcliff Realignment Project. And then the second presentation will be on the OPWC application Broad and Hamilton Intersection Improvement. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll wait just a moment for our community affairs manager to get everything loaded. We also have a few people who are joining us via Zoom for the public meeting as part of our OPWC application. We have to include public involvement, so we're going to go Facebook and Zoom.
Thank you.
Yes. So we have two presentations today. We are proposing to make two applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission for two projects, one being the Woodcliff Drive relocation. I will show that in a minute. The other one being the East Broad Street-Hamilton Road Intersection Improvement Project that we've been working on for a while. And so we'll go ahead and start on the Woodcliff Drive. So before we do that, Ryan, can I talk a little bit about OPWC?
Yes, yeah, so I'll talk about OPWC. So, how up on the Works Commission, every year in September, they ask us to submit projects that we think are good, public infrastructure improvements. It's typically a combination of grant loan and local match. And again, it's dedicated to infrastructure projects. It's solely funded by the state gasoline tax. So again, it's nothing that raises anybody's taxes here locally. It's just a great opportunity for us to bring some of that money back to Whitehall for very important roadway projects. It's a highly competitive process. We submit pretty lengthy detailed applications, and we compete with everybody else around Central Ohio for a certain amount of funding. Usually it's about $20 million, $20 to $25 million a year that they hand out in funds. And a lot of times, they'll get up to 25, 30 applications. Again, very competitive, we're always competing with Columbus, Franklin County, and then all the other suburbs. And public involvement is a very important piece. Normally, we try to have a public involvement meeting, and when we do that, we like to do it during this forum so that we have an audience here. Unfortunately, this year, it prevents us from being able to do that. But we do have a few people who are logged on in via Zoom, and if anybody has any questions, I just ask that you type them into the chat box, and we'll try to address them before the end of the meeting.
And the same thing for anyone who is watching on Facebook. If you have any questions, go ahead and type them into the comments, and Megan will let us know what those questions were as well. So just to start, one of the things that we want to add to that is that when we are evaluating which projects to apply for, and I know most of you have heard me say this before, is that we look for not only the projects that are worthy, but also the ones that will score the best. Because not every project would score equally, and if we don't believe that it has a reasonable shot to get funded, well, then all we've done is waste a whole lot of time, money, and energy putting together an application that won't get funded. EMH and T in my office will go through the scoring criteria and the different categories where points are available, and we will tailor and harp our application to those categories, again, looking to ensure that we can get the highest competitive application and using the past year and the past five years as a benchmark. So at what point was the cutoff for in points, and how can we put together a project that scores above that average cutoff? So again, we're maximizing our ability to get these grant numbers. So the, here we go, help me out. So in the Woodcliff redevelopment, this is a relocation of Woodcliff, so it's relocating the roadway to accommodate that development. So this is a connector road through the development. We'll show a picture here in a minute. It would be reconstructing the roadway with sidewalks and a multi-use trail, install new water drains and storm sewer improvements, and street lights and traffic signals. What did I miss? Not a lot. I think that's about it, really.
All right, thanks, Aug.
So this is a picture, our exhibit, rather. What you see here is we're proposing a new traffic signal to be proposed on Hamilton Road, about halfway between Broad Street and Poth. You can see the new connector road that would cut through the former Woodcliff condominium property to a roundabout that for this phase would go down to Broad Street. Future phases actually call for the road also extend Woodcliff to then realign and extend north up to Poth Road as well, and then coming out to Broad Street, so it creates a full access, gets people away from the light at Broad and Hamilton, in and out of the development. So again, you can see here kind of generally what the plan is that we have. Is there any questions at this point?
Okay. Next slide. You want to go over this?
Sure, yeah, so the Broad and Hamilton is an intersection improvement. It's designed to enhance capacity through the intersection, shorten wait times and stop times for people, shorten the queue, obviously during morning and evening rush hour, depending on one direction you're heading, you can get them a pretty long wait at that signal. This project's not going to make all the traffic go away, but it's going to reduce the amount of time in all of the phases. So what we're doing is adding lanes to, again, get more vehicles, increase that capacity, and get more vehicles through the intersection in less time. And so there's a new, and you'll see this on an exhibit, the exhibit's kind of hard to see though, too, so we might have to zoom in on it, but there's a new right-hand turn lane from eastbound Broad Street to southbound Hamilton. So it's a dedicated right-hand turn lane that will prevent people who are going straight through that intersection from keeping people who want to go right and want to go southbound on Hamilton from making that turn. There are dual left turn lanes from northbound Hamilton to westbound Broad. So again, right now, there's one left-hand turn lane. Second left-hand turn lane, it is going to shorten the stacking of the vehicles on Hamilton Road on the south side of the intersection, on that southern leg. New right-hand turn lane from westbound Broad to northbound Hamilton. So again, this is up against Speedway as you're coming from 270 to go north on Hamilton, a dedicated right-hand turn lane. And then again, that'll do similar thing. It'll prevent those vehicles who are normally going straight through that intersection from preventing people from making a right-hand turn on red, or from making a turn when we can phase it so that there will be a dedicated right-hand turn here. Dual left turn lanes from westbound Broad to southbound Hamilton. So again, a lot of traffic goes south on Hamilton, and here, we're taking the one left-hand turn lane and making two. And then dual left turn lanes from southbound Hamilton to eastbound Broad. So again, this is coming from the north. If you want to go get on 270, increasing the capacity there, making it so more vehicles can make that left-hand turn during the green light. So with that, we're widening, reconstructing the road, new traffic signal. Unfortunately, we can't widen out the road and keep the existing traffic signal. I know it's not that old, but it needs to be longer and have more signal heads on it to handle all the additional lanes. Curb ramps, sidewalks, there's a multi-use trail that's planned on part of the project as well. And then I think there are going to be some decorative amenities. We'll look at maybe doing brick inside medians, or maybe a brick strip along the sidewalk or something to that nature to sort of give it a nice aesthetic look.
So one of the other things, too, that I want to point out as well is on Broad and Hamilton, both northbound, southbound, eastbound, and westbound, there will be curb height medians that will be installed. And the goal of that is to prevent what we've all, I think, seen, which is somebody coming out of one of those businesses there at the corner, coming across five lanes of traffic to turn left. So this will eliminate that. This intersection, as you all know, is consistently rated as one of the worst 30 for safety in our region, one of the worst 100 in the state. And so that feature will immensely improve the amount of safety there at that intersection because you won't have people turning leftbound. Yes, sir.
On westbound Broad, turning left, southbound Hamilton, how far back are we making this on Broad Street? I mean, compared to, like, in reference to the way it sits right now? We're going to add another lane. Are we going back further towards, like, 270? So do you know how far?
How far is one?
How far are the turn lanes going to be?
So the turn lanes typically will stop before you get to, like, the Columbus County Club.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's
I was trying to see if that's what that was.
The light gray is sort of the footprint of the existing road, and the darker kind of charcoal, almost black, is where the road's widened. And you can see that it's really down the mid-cliff where that turn lane sort of ends, and it's before you get to the Columbus County Club.
Okay, thanks.
So one of the questions I see here on our Facebook is, will that section of Fairway Boulevard become a two-way street? My understanding would be that you're looking at the current exhibit, which is an old aerial that shows old Fairway before the construction of Morphe Cross, and so that road actually no longer exists. But there will be a two-way road from Fairway that Fairway actually will drive into the new development, and yes, it will be two-way. So overall, is next slide budget? Yeah. So next slide is budget. And so the Woodcliff realignment is about a $4.2 million project. The developer that we have been working with is committing to 25.1% as a match. So they are going to match this project with about just over $1 million. And so that, again, you can imagine, they gave us 25.1% because it needed to be 25% to get
It needed to be 25% to get points.
So that's the match from them. So we're requesting just over $3.1 million from OPWC for the Broad and Hamilton project. We've talked about this project for a while. This is nearly an $11 million project. We already have commitments for $9.5 million, and so our request is for just over $1.4 million, which represents the match that the city committed to to get part of that $9.5 million. So as Ryan mentioned earlier, typically, these projects are 75, the amount you request is 75% grant, 25% loan. So our then loan amount on that would be
1.4
Right, 350, thank you. 350,000?
That's excessive.
Well, so that's, if you figure on it correctly, on most an $11 million project, our city contribution would be about $350,000. And that 350,000 is converted to a 20- or 25-year interest-free loan. So our annual debt service is about $15 to $17 million a year on a
15,000, 17,000?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Sorry, on an $11 million project. So this is why, again, last week, we were still working on this Broad and Hamilton. To my knowledge, this is the first time the city will have applied for two projects at the same calendar year, in the same funding cycle. Again, we had extensive conversations with Morphe City, who scores the applications, with EMH and T to go through, and so we feel pretty confident that both of these will score high enough to be awarded fine.
Cool.
What other question? Yes, Captain.
The length of the project.
So these are typically, these are both probably an eight-month project. Right now, the Broad and Hamilton Intersection Improvement Project is slated to begin spring of 2023. Woodcliff realignment, if we were notified in December that we were successful, in the first part of next year, we officially get funded, the money becomes available July 1 of 2021, and then this project would probably go to bid the Woodcliff realignment in the beginning of 2022. So we are working with ODOT to see if there's a possibility of moving the Broad and Hamilton Intersection Improvement Project from calendar year 23 to calendar year 22, so we could do both of those projects at the same time.
Director, you said that one project, the Woodcliff, that would award, if we're notified in December, correct?
Both, both.
Both of them? That was my next question.
Yeah, so, yeah, correct. If you go to the next slide? There we go. See, Ryan is even good on that. There we go. So December 11th, we would find out if we're awarded, and then again, the money is available in July, and then we would potentially be able to bid these both out in hypothetically January, February, or April. That'd be the one.
Nice.
Are there any other questions? Any other questions from council? Thank you all very much.
Director, thank you. Ms. Andrews, thank you.
Director, looks good.
Very good presentation. Thank you.
That now brings us to our first poll public of the evening. Ms. Aug has shared with me that there have been no letters shared, and so we'll move on to standing committee reports.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Bailey, but Mr. Rodriguez will be so kind as to
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Finance Management met last week. The minutes are on file. We have a cornucopia of items on the agenda this evening. We'll be rolling in shortly.
Thank you.
Meeting again next week after 6:30.
Sorry, thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. There are no drafts or pending legislation, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Terrific. Community Standards Enforcement Chairperson Rodriguez.
Community Standards Enforcement also met last Tuesday. The minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
And thank you again. Economic Development Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Very good. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have two pieces of legislation we're voting on tonight, and we will meet next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. Public Safety Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back, actually, up front here, on Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Old habits.
Old habits.
Parks and Recreation Chairperson Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again here next week after 6:30.
Very good. We'll now move on to the official reports. Mayor Kim Maynard.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to ask for favorable consideration of boldnesses 63, 68, 70, 71, and resolutions 29, 32, and 34. And I would like to thank Director Woodruff and Ryan Andrews for the wonderful presentation. And if we can get two OPWC projects awarded, that would be phenomenal. Thank you for your support of those projects.
Thank you, Mayor. Attorney Vivens is not with us this evening. City Auditor Mr. Miller is not with us this evening. Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I've already spoken enough.
Astute observation, thank you. Director of Public Safety, Mr. Van De Greg, is not with us this evening. Treasurer Steve Quinsell, he is not with us this evening. The following reports, official reports, have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. The Auditor's expense report for August 2020, the Auditor's bank report for August 2020, the Auditor's statement of cash position report for August 2020, and the Auditor's revenue report for August 2020. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have one item listed, minutes for the September 3rd, 2020, meeting of the Whitehall Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Aug, would you please call roll as to whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation?
Cantor?
Lots of add-ons, yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have gotten a legislation for consideration this evening. Second reading, we have ordinance 63, 2020, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio, PEP, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, move to introduce ordinance 63, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore, has introduced ordinance 63, 2020, and for the suspensible rules, a discussion on the motion to suspend. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move to introduce.
Adopt.
Adopt, sorry. One word.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Morrison, seconded by Ms. Elmore, a discussion on the motion to adopt. Hearing nothing, Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance 63, 2020 has been adopted. Under first reading, we have ordinance 65, 2020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $30,000 from unappropriate monies in the Inspection Deposit Fund 804 to the Inspection Deposit Account 804-000-50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 65, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Coniston, has introduced ordinance 65, 2020, and asked for suspensible rules, a discussion on the motion to suspend. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Coniston, a discussion on the motion. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance 65, 2020 has been adopted. We now have ordinance 66, 2020, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $35,000 from unappropriate monies in the acreage fees fund 854 to the acreage fees account 854-000-50,000, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 66, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez has introduced ordinance 66, 2020, seconded by Mr. Cantor, and asked for suspensible rules, a discussion on suspension of rules. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Cantor, a discussion on the motion. Ms. Aug?
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance 66, 2020 has been adopted. Ordinance 67, 2020 will be read by Title Only this evening, approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $30,000 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101, the income tax refunds expense account 101.350.57,000, and declaring an emergency. Again, that's by Title Only. Ordinance 68, 2020, authorizing exemptions of 161.09A Vacation and Sixth Leave Credit Carryover 161.09B for the purpose of employing a highly qualified employee to the City of Whitehall and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce 68, 2020, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A, here, ordinance 68, 2020, has been introduced by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Morrison, requesting suspensible rules, a discussion on suspension of rules. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
To adopt?
Second. Motion to adopt by Ms. Coniston, seconded by Mr. Morrison, a discussion on the motion. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Ordinance 68, 2020 has been adopted. Ordinance 69, 2020, making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $10,000 from unappropriate monies in the general fund 101, the comp time buyback account 101-900-51,280, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 69, 2020, move for the adopt or move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck, has introduced ordinance 69, 2020, and for the suspension of all rules, a discussion. Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez and second by Ms. Heck. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Ordinance 69, 2020 has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance 70, 2020, approving the declarations of restrictions regarding the Big Walnut Creek Access and Restoration Project located within Whitehall Community Park and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 70, 2020 and move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Connison, to introduce ordinance 70, 2020 and for the suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Connison. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Ordinance 70, 2020 has been adopted. Next this evening, we have got ordinance 71, 2020, up for consideration as read. And that is authorizing and approving an amendment 161.38A, Salary Schedule of the Codified Ordances of the City of Whitehall and declaring an emergency. Whereas there will soon be a vacancy in the position of chief building official and whereas it is necessary to provide a competitive salary range in order to attract qualified applicants. Now, therefore, be ordained by the Council of the City of Whitehall, Ohio. Section 1, for the authority of Council of the City of Whitehall, the following amendment is made in the salary schedule, specifically the position of chief building official. 161.38 Salary Schedule A, the following salary range is hereby set with pay to be determined by the respective appointing authority. Chief Building Official, pay range of $32.69 to $50.48. Section 2, that the ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary for the preservation of the public health, peace, safety, and welfare. And for further reasons, updates and amendments are necessary to attract qualified applicants for this position. Wherefore, the ordinance shall go into full force and effect immediately upon its passage and approval by the mayor. This was requested and prepared by Mayor Maggard and approved to form as Michael Vivins, City Attorney.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 71, 2020 and move to introduce it as read and move to suspend all rules.
Second.
There has been a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore, to introduce ordinance 71, 2020 as read and suspend the rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Ordinance 71, 2020 has been adopted. Next this evening, we have Resolution 29, 2020, authorizing the mayor to place Colleen Shaw, City of Whitehall dispatcher, at a step E in compliance with Section 17.2 of the current labor agreement by and between the City of Whitehall and the Federal Order Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 29, 2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Connison has introduced Resolution 29, 2020, seconded by Ms. Elmore, and requested suspension of rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second?
Second.
Wait.
A uh, motion to adopt was brought forward by Ms. Connison, seconded by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 29, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 30, 2020, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing necessary tax leeways and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 30, 2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Resolution 30, 2020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck, with the request of suspension of all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, motion to adopt by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Heck. Any discussion? Ms. Aug?
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Resolution 30, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 31, 2020, resolving to approve the then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 31, 2020, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A the Resolution 31, 2020 has been introduced by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore, with the request to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, been a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Elmore for the adoption of Resolution 31, 2020. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Resolution 31, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 32, 2020, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 32, 2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Heck, seconded by Ms. Connison, to introduce Resolution 32, 2020 and to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Heck and seconded by Ms. Connison. Any motion? Any comments on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Resolution 32, 2020 has been adopted. Resolution 33, 2020 will be read by Title Only this evening, approving the recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax and Senate Review Council for tax year 2019. Again, that's by Title Only. Our final pieces piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 34, 2020. A resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 34, 2020 and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Heck has introduced Resolution 34, 2020, seconded by Mr. Cantor, also requesting suspension of all rules. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Aug, please call roll.
Cantor?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?